Guards work, not the hard work, you already know. Woke trans dudes get destroyed at town hall meeting, man. Interesting stuff, alright? Guards work. Double tap the screen on the way in the door, you know? You're on that Trump train, you already know what it hit for around here? What's the question of the day? Let me see. Says should boys be allowed? Yo, listen, y'all see the question, okay? I, I think it's ridiculous that we gotta even have these discussions, but obviously, you know what I'm saying, by the looks of it, somebody, seven votes, you know what I'm saying? They saying yes, let them into the, you know, I don't know if they trolling, whatever, or people are that so concerned with uh, these so-called human rights that you don't understand the implications of what, what that mean? What, what, what happens when that goes on? Uh, I'm not gonna explain to you, it is what it is, you know what I'm saying? But uh, let's move on. I was talking about me, my background music, you know what I'm saying? Alright, Captain Obvious salute, alright? Let's get to this work today, let's get to this work, whole lot of work we got today. Got a lot of videos up today, man, I wanted to go through. I got some um, you know, reacting to so-called, you know, that, that word, man, that woke shit, man, they just made it all, means something else, you know what I'm saying? It's not, it's not what it used to be, I can say that much, you know? Being woke used to be a good thing, but now it's like, I, I wanna be far from woke, you know? I like to be a little bit less. Mm-hmm. Alright, so look, this big fat blob right here, you know what I mean? I had to get past the minute mark before I start acting stupid. Man, I don't understand, you know, in my mind, there's a thin line between, you know, human rights and mental illness, alright? Let's talk, alright? Let's talk. Aki says FBA forever, you know what I'm saying? We can talk about that later, you know what I mean? Um, salute to you. I mean, that, you know, I mean, before we get people up in here, I would, let me show you one thing, man. I don't know if you was watching the vid, you, I think you was, I think you was there, right? But explain this to me, right? Tariq Nasheen, he selling, he selling fitted hats? This is what we doing? See, people gonna say that I'm hating on him getting money. Nah, get your money, my boy, but say that's what you doing. You know, things that's for the people, say dot org, you know what I'm saying? Something like that, but don't say official, FBA dot com, and you go over there, you go get you some hats, or get you a book, or get, you know what I'm saying? So to me, I, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking that if it's for the people, by the people, then the, obviously, the residual should come back somehow to the people, you know what I mean? But you own the FBA. Man, this is snake oil, you all day, man. Anyway, salute Aki Betha, you know what I mean? Um, it is what it is, there's a lot of people that feel that same way, and we, we should, I mean, you know, black people should be at a point right now where we, where we, we get some gatekeeping going on and, and some accountability, so we can stop getting robbed, cuz it's, it's crazy, right? But this guy right here, uh, I don't know, man, I don't know if he's, like, what is he doing to us? For real, for real? He has a half a,
Take care of the students.
I don't know why it looks like his, his, wherever he lives, it stinks, but,
But half of you are not sure what gender is.
Oh shit, Ming is here, Lansky is here, Pull No Punches is here, everybody salute, man. Um, Captain Obvious, Trick Lady, I saw him like,
Especially transgender, no, the lawyer said,
This is weirdo, Jabba the Hutt right here.
You, you say you care about students, but half of you are not sure what gender is. Especially transgender, no, the lawyer said transsexual earlier, that's not the correct term, it's transgender. I'm a transgender,
Basically, they're basically trying to Devo us into a position of calling them certain things. It's like, yo, listen, man, uh, it's not like a name preference or whatever, but it's actually what you are. This is like a cat telling you to call him a dog. If you don't call me a dog, I'm not gonna, you know, we gonna have to take him to the dog doctor at some point.
Gender woman, my pronouns are she/her, and I will,
So, his pronouns are she/her, even though he's a biological man, okay, it's interesting.
Gender, I'm a transgender woman, my pronouns are she/her, and I will only accept those pronouns. I will not be addressed any other way, and in the workspace, I have, I'm protected.
Am I bugging, or, but does it always seem that they're unhappy while they're, you know, liberating themselves? You know, I would think that you'd be happy, I've never seen these people really smile.
Her, and I will only accept those pronouns. I will not be addressed any other way, and in the workspace, I have, I'm protected by that. Our students should be too, especially when they don't, they're not over eighteen, don't have a voice. So I'm just imploring you to, to go beyond what, um, just really consider, what is this fight really about? Why is it such entrenched? I know we hear a lot about religious liberty, and uh, quite honestly, uh, I grew up in Christian education all through college.
They gotta beat us into these positions, though.
College, I don't remember any of my doc,
No, that's, that's the purple Jabba the Hutt right there.
Class,
Money two four seven.
Mentioning only male and female, and that's the way it should be. Um, if, if you feel it is, awesome, good, you get to believe that, you don't get to impose those beliefs.
Now, this is where the problem come from, cuz he's pumping this for school, y'all. He wants this, this is at a school, this is at a school, a, a school, uh, meeting right now, you know what I mean?
Like, On anybody else, and that's actually what religious,
Board of Education to be exact.
Liberty is, is that your right to believe that that's protected, but the other person that identifies as something else is also, also,
An astounding, an astounding rate and percentage of suicide that comes from this, this, cuz I think about it, man, like, I don't care what adults do, but when you got the kids confused about this shit, and, you know, Timmy wants to chop his thing off, man, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta stop it.
I have, I'm protected by that, our students should be too, especially when they don't, they're not over eighteen, don't have a voice. So I'm just imploring you to, to go beyond what,
Man, you wanna, but man, they trying to pump this on my kids, man.
Um, just really consider,
Mammy Peace Queen, um, and um, salute Ardenise.
Consider, what is this fight really about? Why is it such entrenched? I know we hear a lot about religious liberty, and uh, quite honestly, uh, I grew up in Christian education all through college. I don't remember any.
Well, you know, he must be looking for a skinny black dude, I don't know. The skinny black dudes love big white women, I ain't gonna lie to you.
Of my doctrinal classes,
That's what he's going for, he's going for the big,
Mentioning only male and female, and that's the way it should be. Um, if, if you feel it is, awesome.
Well, what's wrong with the world? Is the stuff I'm saying wrong with the world? I don't think transsexuals and transgenders is, is what's wrong with the world. I think that them trying to pump that in the schools is horrible. Whatever you wanna do with your own life, do it, or you pumping this on kids, these kids are committing suicide, man, confused, alright? So, I don't know what you talking about, me or them.
Good, you get to believe that, you don't get to impose those beliefs on anybody else. And that's actually what religious liberty is, is that your right to believe that's protected, but the other person that identifies as something else is also, also is right to be protected, so I guess I'm here to say is, uh, you know,
Get it, man, it's almost as if, it's, it's like a crime to be heterosexual, man. If you're not doing something weird, or, you know, or naming yourself something weird, it's almost like you get targeted more than that. I mean, the regular people don't even wanna, uh, approach these people sometimes, because it's like, yo, I don't know how I'm gonna get canceled, or what I'm gonna get canceled for. What did I do to him, her? I mean, she, him. I mean, she, her, I forgot what he said he wanted to be called.
Pride, uh, we're paying attention, and we're gonna be involved in this conversation if it keeps on going.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you guys are even considering,
I do want everybody to be mindful of what you're saying in the chat, you know what I'm saying? Because I, you know, had the Fed reach out to me one time for some shit that Ja was saying in the chat, so, if you saying crazy, crazy, crazy stuff in the chat, you're gonna get put on timeout or blocked, alright? So be creative with your fuck shit. It's all welcome, but be creative.
Letting uh, bathrooms and locker rooms being uh, co-ed? I, I don't care how they identify or whatever, whatever kind of delusion people live in, whatever kind of mental disease that they have. Uh, boys are boys and girls are girls, it's simple and basic, it's always been that way, and that's why we have separate bathrooms. I'm not gonna allow my girls or my boys to shower with the opposite sex.
This is gonna go bad, cuz this guy right here, he's a real American, he holds no punches, and he is going to take the gloves off right now. Before he does that, double tap the screen, if you're on that Trump train, um, respectfully, spam the chat with ones. Let him know that you in the building, you know what I'm saying? Cuz these people on the left like to really give us issues over here, okay? Double tap the screen and go to the top right, hit three dots. Should they let boys in girls bathrooms? That's what he's talking about right here, this dude right here must has, must have a daughter, you know? Because any man will feel like, you know, I don't want no dude walking down on my fifteen, fourteen-year-old daughter, talking about he's a girl too, nah, nah, not gonna,
If it keeps on going.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you guys are even considering letting uh, bathrooms and locker rooms being uh, co-ed? I, I don't care how they identify or whatever, whatever kind of delusion people live in, whatever kind of mental disease that they have. Uh, boys are boys and girls are girls, it's simple and basic, it's always been that way, and that's why we have separate bathrooms. I'm not gonna allow my girls or my boys to shower with the opposite sex, cuz I don't want them fondled.
And these are the type of people that they, they try to make black people think that these are hillbillies. You know, he talks a little bit different, whatever, but look at the conviction in what he's saying. This is a man that has a fucking family, that doesn't want his sons, and you know what I mean? Like going in the girls bathroom, and he don't want his daughters, it's just that simple.
Or,
Y'all want that, y'all should just build a whole type of different school, man.
Painted by one of these deranged people sexually, and that's what lingers in these um, groups of homosexuality and transgenderism is uh, uh, sexually explicit um ideology. Um, my daughter goes to Franklin, she brought home books about how it's okay that two parents are gay in a household, and it's okay,
At eleven-year-old dude, you know what I'm saying? Excuse me, twelve-year-old guy, go come to my, yeah, eleven-year-old son, and ask him, do he want to be his boyfriend? And my son's reaction to him got me called to the school, you know what I'm saying? Now, it just seemed like the, the principal, cuz I had to speak to the principal, was pretty like trying to be cool with me and, you know, on, on that type of level, right? But the kid was so distraught, didn't understand that why would you just randomly ask some kid that? He ain't even know my son, you know? And my son is new to the school, right? I go speak to the parent, and the parent looked like they already knew this was going on, you know what I'm saying? With their child, like, listen, man, listen, I don't know what type of thing y'all being, doing in your house, but in my house, boys are boys and girls are girls, it's just that simple.
Okay for boys to be girls and girls to be boys? What kind of delusion are you guys living in? Are, are, are people really retarded, we're still having,
Pickle said, I, I look like his gay neighbor. Somebody called me Harry Piehead yesterday, you know what I'm saying? Don't shoot him, let him go.
These talks, like, what, what is going on here? No, it's a, it's a word, I can use that if I want.
If, if your, if your neighbor killed the nigga and end up with twenty years, then I understand that, you know what I'm saying? Uh, salute to me, Mac Mean, true story. Don't come over here with that trolling shit, cuz trust me, I'm ready for it all, alright? Okay, don't get yourself fucked up. Alright, let's get back to the show.
Can't, and uh, yeah, I, I just, I can't believe people are so open-minded, their brains have literally fell out, just nobody know,
We keep it real, man, we very biased on this show, this is a very conservative show, and if you're on the other side,
Fuck myself, fuck the bank, fuck Regula, fuck VRT, all of us, fuck your ex, fuck your ex.
Yeah, have some respect there, double tap the screen or go to the top right, hit the three dots. Spam this chat with ones if you're on a Trump train and you fuck with Trump, and if you believe in Trump, that twenty twenty-five is gonna be a better year. Let's get those uh, let's get those ones in the chat. I don't care if you put a hundred ones in the chat, go ahead and knock yourself out, okay? Right now, we're talking about whether it's right or wrong to be letting this shit go, because honestly, if you let one thing go, next thing you know, they're gonna make, it seem like regular stuff, regular things that are innate, innate, right? Or native to humans, something is wrong with you by thinking a certain way. No, I would think something is wrong with a person that's wants to chop his thing off. What's up, bro? I ain't nothing, roll up, I be rolling up, smoking, yo, I was thinking about something, man, I had something on my, what you got on your mind, my boy? You know what I'm saying? Nah, tomorrow, I think I'm gonna go get a surgery and take off the, the, the situation. Okay, aight, I holler at you, you know? I would think something is wrong with you, or you trolling me.
In these um, groups of homosexuality and transgenderism is uh, uh, sexually explicit um ideology. Um, my daughter goes to Franklin, she brought home books about how it's okay that two parents are gay in a household, and it's okay for,
Jonathan, these people are sick and twisted with the ideology that kids are even involved with this conversation, or should they be included in, in these sort of conversations? But yet, it's like almost, you know, they figured that the way they pushed us, regular people, um, heterosexual people around for so long, and made it almost like a crime, like, to, to be heterosexual, you know what I'm saying? Like, for real, especially in the work environment, man, that shit is twisted.
Boys to be girls and girls to be boys? What kind of delusion are you guys living in? Are, are, are people really retarded, we're still having these talks? Like, what, what is going on here? No, it's a, it's a word, I can use that if I want.
He ain't, listen, he's at a congressional hearing, and it doesn't look like he's really seasoned for this, so this is why I like it, cuz it just sounds like a regular person spilling their raw emotions.
Yes, I can, and uh, yeah, I, I just, I can't believe people are so open-minded, their brains have literally fell out, does nobody know why we had,
Even, even to build himself, baby.
Opposite uh, sport teams and opposite bathrooms for boys and girls? To protect both sexes from one another? If they, if they wanna play some delusional game, we have to allow it? Then they should have their own bathroom and their own support, their, their own sports.
Well, you know, I said the same thing.
Simple as that, you know, they shouldn't be allowed to uh, win in a common shop.
Purple-haired motherfuckers, mad, I think they bring them back up. Y'all seen the purple-haired dude, y'all? Real quick, I'm gonna bring it right back. This one right here, let me, let me, let me show the people that, that just walking in the building what's going on.
Not sure what gender is. Especially transgender, no, the lawyer said transsexual earlier, that's not the correct term, it's transgender. I'm a transgender woman, my pronouns are she/her, and I will only accept those pronouns. I will not be addressed any other way, and in the workspace, I have, I'm protected by that. Our students should be too, especially when they don't, they're not over,
A text email, me, um, you want me to check my email, E?
Your team don't have a voice. So I'm just imploring you to, to go beyond what um, just really consider,
I think about that, parents, right? If you're a parent, what do you think about your thirteen-year-old daughter in school? And then, you know, fourteen-year-old boy comes in there and says that, you know, because he identify, he calls himself a woman, that he walks in your, you with that?
Consider, what is this fight really about? Why is it such entrenched? I know we hear a lot about religious liberty, and uh, quite honestly, uh, I grew up in Christian education all through college. I don't remember any of my,
I'm about to drop the link, man, cuz we gonna open this conversation up to the public, man. I'm gonna lay, I'm gonna leave the, the street yard link here, if you wanna come up, you can come up, hit the stage, you know, and, and speak about this. You don't have to show your face, you got the option to turn your camera off, so we can just hear your voice, but anybody's allowed to come speak.
My doctrinal classes, mentioning,
Let's get the likes up real quick, we got three, four hundred people up there, we need the likes to go past a hundred. Answer the question, should boys be allowed in the girls bathroom? Let the votes go up. Alright, hit your screen till you see that thumb pop up on your joint, or go to the top right and hit the three dots. Should they be in the bathrooms, man? This is what they're talking about right now. Now, this ain't a congressional hearing, I wish it was. But, just as important, cuz it's talking about our kids.
Only male and female, and that's the way it should be. Um, if, if you feel it is, awesome, good, you get to believe that, you don't get to impose those beliefs on anybody else. And that's actually what religious liberty is, is that your right to believe,
Type ones in the chat if you fucking with Trump this year, let's go.
That's protected, but the other person that identifies as something else is also, also is right to be protected, so, I guess I'm here to say is, uh, you know, with Ashgosh Pride, uh, we're paying attention, and we're gonna be involved in this conversation.
Man, he's in the schools, trying to push legislation. Oh, man, legislation, he wanting to go to the board of the Catholic, he's serious, this, this is well thought out.
Keeps on going.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you guys are even considering letting uh, bathrooms and locker rooms being uh, co-ed? I, I don't care how they identify or whatever, whatever kind of delusion people live in, whatever kind of mental disease that they have. Uh, boys are boys and girls are girls, it's simple and basic, it's always been that way, and that's why we have separate bathrooms. I'm not gonna allow my girls or my boys to shower with the opposite sex, cuz I don't want them fondled or tainted by one of these deranged people sexually. And that's what lingers in these um, groups of homosexuality and transgenderism is uh, uh, sexually explicit um ideology.
Be careful with your opinion, because you will get canceled and targeted for your opinion. If you say that there's something wrong with them trying to press that agenda, guess what? If you, if you roar it too loud, hey, you might get a crime, put a, listen, Obama came around, didn't do nothing for the black people, got in the office off the black vote, ignored the black people, and gave everybody else rights. You touch them, you're going to jail, alright? But it's okay to kill a black man, you know what I mean? It's, that's, or let's say an American, black and American. But they protected, man, so most breaking the law to be straight.
Gee, um, my daughter goes to Franklin, she brought home books about how it's okay that two parents are gay in a household, and it's okay for boys to be girls and girls to be boys.
I pull my son in this room right now, and I tell him, yo, tell the people what they teach you about that, right? Some of y'all gonna break your fucking computer. You really gonna throw something at this computer, you gonna be so mad and say, you know what, like, why, why? Like, you, you, after a while, you have to think there's an agenda. You'll be dumb to not start looking deeper into this, especially if you got kids.
What is, what kind of delusion are you,
Some of y'all, let me keep it real, some of y'all letting these devices in the schools raise your kids anyway. You don't even know what the fuck going on with your kids. Do you go through, do they pay their work, do you help them out in any kind of way? Do you go to anything school-related? Cuz I'm gonna keep it real. I take my son to school every day and pick him up every day. There's a lot of fathers missing, I be seeing a lot of pajamas and, and, and this, and furry steering wheels at the joint. For real, the joint being the school, okay? So a lot of parents don't even know what's going on with their kids, cuz they allowing the schools to raise them. So I, if you want the schools to raise your kids, at least understand what they're gonna, they're raising them up on. Especially if old school, and you know that you was taught a different way, you know what I'm saying? To you be your way, to me be my way, but you can't push that towards the kids, man. Some adult stuff like this, man.
You guys living it? Are, are, are people really retarded, we're still having these talks? Like, what, what is going on here? No, it's a, it's a word, I can use that.
Most of the trans haters, the, the, uh, most of the trans haters slurp under the skirt? Nah, man, let me tell you something. Okay, look, I got a gay dude that's up here right now, right? That speaks against this, man. You know what I mean? It's, listen, we ain't talking about, listen, cross-dressing, all of that, you know what I'm saying? We not talking about that, we not talking about you wanna deal, we talking about somebody that actually changes their whole sex. Come on, man, there's a lot of gay dudes out here that know that they're a man, Damon. I'm a boy, Damon, they not mentally ill, they, they'll tell you, I'm, I'm a dude and I'm messing with dudes, you know what I mean? But, but changing, cutting off your pipe, the pipeline? Come on, boy, let's think about that. You know why he wakes up and think about that? It's like taking a, a fucking, uh, a knife and shoving it up under your nails or something, you, who's thinking about that? It's the worst, I don't, I don't want that to happen, but, of course, we gonna have people say that we hating on the people, right? Let me show you something, well, this dude, I'm not, let me take this back, cuz I don't actually know if this dude is gay. Alright, but he do give me kinda vibes, but, you know what I'm saying? Makes me feel that he might be on the spectrum, you know what I mean? I know I'm playing with fire today, y'all, but we gotta, we gotta, we gotta go, we gotta get through it, you know what I'm saying? You know, some people like to put the medicine and candy,
I am not a danger to,
Nah, I'm gonna take the slingshot and, and shoot it at your face, okay? Alright, get ready for this ride, man, you already go down the rabbit hole? Let's get some carrots in the chat, for real, that make me feel real good, especially if y'all get the likes up too. Double tap the screen, let's get them likes up, alright? Let's go down this rabbit hole, carrots, 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 carrots. I'm gonna put this in HD, y'all gotta see this guy here right here, I forgot what his name is. You know what I'm saying? Jeffrey Marsh or something like that.
You [__] the rock tranny today.
Now, this is called reacting to woke trans people freak out after getting misgendered, just because somebody called you the wrong, you know what I mean?
When I went to you, the restroom, there was a woman and her daughter. Hey, kids, hi, kids, hi, kids, hi, I'm Jeffrey.
And he's the number one dude that, that's really, you know, pivoting his, his voice towards the kids. Alright, carrots in the chat, you already going in this rabbit hole, man, and type your city in the chat, if you knew, if you knew this, um, this channel, type your city in the chat and double tap the screen.
And I am not a danger to children, I am a danger to parents, though.
What's up, everybody? My name is Amir, and welcome back to the channel. In today's video, we'll be discussing a bunch of trans people acting a fool, whether they're angry at someone,
I'm saying, this guy right here, he, he got, he, you know, he,
Forgetting misgendering them.
He just shut up and let you hear it.
They're going off on somebody in the street, whatever it may be, we're here to react to it all, it is an insane mess, but speaking of trans people, we have to discuss,
I'm getting to the point that there are a lot of people that, that's, that's gay dudes, you know what I'm saying? And they, they might cross-dress and all that and do all that crazy shit, but they grown ass men, and, you know what I mean? And they know that they men, hey, bro, do your thing, man, you feel me? Them niggas know how to steal the best, I'm gonna tell you that. If you into getting fly and all that, and you ain't got one of them do, them niggas come with the, the fly shit, whatever you want, oh, they gonna go get it. I'm trying to tell you, you know what I'm saying? But, when you trying to pump that at the kids, and nah, you gotta really look at the implication of what you pushing at these kids. And they, they impressionable, especially when they don't have a balance, when they go onto the TV, the, the internet, everything is pumping the same thing. It either pumping that, or pumping us to go to jail by consuming this goofy-ass music that they, they got right now, and how it's influencing the hood and shit like that, it's like a double-edged sword. We gotta save our kids somehow. So when you come to this channel and you say that, you know, like, we, we targeting those people, or we hate them? You use that word, nobody said nothing about no hatred, but let me listen to this man.
Twenty twenty-four Olympics, here we have Iman Khalif, and there is constant back and forth on whether or not this person is a male or a female. Something important to note is that from her home country, you know, it's not legal to be trans. When she was born, the doctors looked at what was there and said, yep, that's a girl, she was raised a girl her whole life, been in female boxing competitions, even has lost some. So when you're looking at that for what it is, she's always been a female. But recently, the only source really come out and said that it's a man is International Boxing Association. They've said they ran tests on Iman, and they've come to the conclusion that Iman is actually a man. But something to note is that this is the same organization that has been stripped as regulator by the Olympics over its,
I don't know why you give me Urkel vibes, but I'm listening.
pela to implement reforms on governance and finance as well as lacking credibility with their testing. So off the bat, it's not like this is a born man, been raised a man his whole life, and then transitioned just so they can be and compete against women. It's way more nuanced than that, you have a ton of people,
Lisa says, listen, I have a little girl, I do not need her to possibly see a man parts changing in the change room or whatnot. Please, this is not okay, it's not okay, alright? But let me go to the poll, let me see what he's talking about on the poll real fast.
We're saying, well, look at him, clearly that's a man, okay, well, this is actually a woman, and this is,
Thirty-three percent of the people so far, get your vote on, I, I need everybody to go get their vote on, right? Ninety-three percent of the people say no, the eight percent, I feel sorry for your mother, you feel me? It's not a good look, even you deserve the chance, you know what I'm saying? Grow the fuck up and make the decisions for yourself.
It's actually a man, so it's like, are we just gonna,
Crazy how they taking away from the education and pushing, you know, this or something else that doesn't help us at all.
Gonna go off looks now, is that what we reduced it to? And then I'm hearing, okay, well, we need to do physical testing, alright? Well, it's clear that even if we did physical testing with Iman, if you,
Watch this one. They don't care, man. They don't do, the dudes that, that be beating these chicks up in the boxing ring, yo, they proud of theyself.
Sir, they knew what they were doing. These teens knew who you were. They knew you'd get triggered by it. They.
There go, there go right here as well.
But to be seen by the world. I would imagine their parents are of the same mind. If my kid was walking around harassing trans people on the street, I'd want them to know. It's not a, a, a light thing. It's not like, oh, they're just being kids. No.
I'm not for people being bullies on the street and just harassing people, but at the same time, it's not like they're going out and harassing trans people. They saw you, not because you're a trans person, but because like you're a, a well-known famous TikToker. Yeah, that's also trans, but your whole stick, your whole personality.
Well, listen, I think they should make a whole new bathroom. I mean, instead of two bathrooms, make three bathrooms. That solves the problem, right?
Lady is being trans and being very confrontational with waitstaff and just, just being rude and expecting everybody to cater to your lifestyle. So it's like, yeah, the kids knew what they were doing, but same time, I don't think these kids are that extremely hateful as much as just troll.
Is that even legal? Can, can a kid that's under eighteen do that? Let me, can somebody look that up for me real quick, man? Mac Attack, if you, are you here? You know what I'm saying? Can you look that up? Is that even legal? Can they, do they have like the right to do that shit? Like to just go make that sort of decision? I know this. I know that the, a teacher can go to school, to jail if they call the parents and tell the parents that the kid is doing that. Like, yeah, teacher like calls the mother up, you know what I'm saying? That, yo, listen, man, Darnell's acting like a dequita. You know what I mean? Like, I think I'm on a talk. Oh, teachers going to jail. Yeah, teachers going to jail.
Bowling because they knew how you would respond and act. When you make this your entire identity, when you make it your whole existence to just eating and being trans and getting mad at anybody who says that you're a sir? You're gonna garner attention for people to call you sir. See, when you tell people what not to do, they typically are gonna.
Thank you. This man is smart.
Do it. If you tell someone, don't call me this, you're gonna make people call you that. Cause you can't control people. The world doesn't revolve around you and it never will.
Hi friends. Today we're talking about something super cool called.
This dude is scary.
Pronouns. Pronouns are little words that help us talk about each other. We all have pronouns. Some people use he and him, like this bear. He's so cuddly.
Ah, she marginalizing the bear.
Some people use she and her, like this cat. She.
I always wondered which one was the boy and the girl with Tom and Jerry? Cause it looked like Jerry was a dude too. Was Jerry a dude? Tom and Jerry, I, we, Tom was a Tom cat, so he was a boy. But was Jerry, I'm trying to figure that out.
He's so playful. Some people use they and them. Oh, like this frog. They like to hop. Can you say?
This is why no one likes you. This is why you garner so much hate truly.
If a kid can't vote, if a kid can't drink legally, how the hell can you make that kind of decision? This is silly. Absolutely.
If you were just a trans person existing about your day, you'd be left alone. This Lily person, we've talked about this person a lot. Like honestly, they would be left alone if they just existed. But when you make it your whole stick to talk and direct your content to.
They, they said, look, a former T S T V said Jerry was a boy. Oh God. Can y'all get the likes up, please? Double tap the screen and get, or hit the three dots in the top right. Jerry was not a fucking boy, former T S T V. Jerry better not have been no boy. Cause Jerry, remember Jerry used to walk around and put the outfit on and act like a girl. Anyway, it's, nevermind.
To children and then also to tear down small businesses for not calling you sir. You open the door for hate. You open the door to be criticized. You open the door for people just to genuinely not like you. And you're confusing people not liking you as a person deep down.
This one, look at this one.
I'm gonna give you a.
That's when he pulled his wig over his head.
Minute and then I'm gonna call the cops. Because you're, you was going in that direction and now you're following me to this location and I'm gonna stand here for one minute.
You antagonized me.
Okay, what's your name?
You're a black woman calling a cop.
What's your name?
A trans woman.
You, oh man, these things are dan, these people are dangerous.
And I just want you to think.
What's your name?
I want you to think about that.
Okay, I, I.
You're a black woman calling a cops.
Your pastors and preachers, ooh, that's, you, you coming in hot. Hey, Lucky Leg, I don't have a pastor or preacher. Alright, block that motherfucker. Whoever said that.
On a trans woman.
Continue to go.
No, 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 no. Okay, your pastors and preachers are diddly. More than trans people are. Don't block them.
Think about that.
We're at thirty seven seconds.
Cause might be telling the truth. I don't know.
I'm going to hang, I'm gonna stop recording at one minute and I'm gonna call the cops if you're still in my area.
This has to be.
And I, and I sincerely doubt that this conversation has anything to do with those people diddling kids. We're talking about the things that they're pushing. You know what? Let me get back to the topic, man. Cause uh, we gonna be all over the place with this one today. Okay, we're gonna be all, I mean, and, and I'm down to beat a few people up, man. Jerry girlfriend was the white mouse with the blue. So why was Jerry out here dressing like a woman? So was Tom. Over the. Gay for pay. I'll just get back to the content. Double tap the screen. Let's get the likes up. Alright? Alright, let me remind y'all where you fuck you at. Cause there's some trolls up in here, alright? There's some trolls in this house. There's some trolls in this house. Ho, 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 jingle balls, all the way in your mouth. Well, the top. In your mouth. I went to growing up, well, it was time to go woke.
Nigga, you gay.
Double tap screen, get the likes up. There's some emotional niggas up ahead, huh?
Between your shower and this, you need this. F T S feminine deodorant spray has powder to absorb moisture. Use it every day to feel fresh, dry and confident. F T S, make it your second deal.
Yeah, I had to reset. I had to hit the reset, man. They, you know, they be coming in the same stuff and then I gotta, you know, I gotta mind myself. Don't offend nobody today. Now my other channel is called Mac Mean T S T V. People that told me to say that, that stands for transvestite. You know, it doesn't mean that. It means true story TV. Alright, come get your life. Let's get back to the topic, alright?
Yes, I can.
Subscribe if you ain't subscribed. Hit that button up at the top. It's free.
And, and uh, yeah, I, I just, I can't believe people are so open minded. Their brains have literally fell out. Does nobody know why we had opposite uh, sport teams and opposite bathrooms for boys and girls? To protect both sexes from one another? If they, if they wanna play some delusional game, we have to allow it? Then they should have their own bathroom and their own support, their, their own sports. It's as simple as that. You know, they shouldn't be allowed to uh, women to come and shower in, in the girl, uh, in the boy's lap, locker room. I, I don't want one of these succubuses coming in there spoiling my young gentleman, you know? It's, it's a word. I can use it if I want. Yeah, yeah, I can.
Not here.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, or what? Yeah. So yeah, either way, I just, I think you guys almost have uh, some type of mental disease, even considering this kind of thing.
I'm not lying, man. The average dude out here in Kentucky, I'm in Ohio, but Kentucky's right, right next door. Yo, they talk just like that. They don't hold nothing back. Can they?
You know, I, I, I don't understand what's going on with you guys that we're even considering this. You guys need to go no.
Reported for racism when that's all, that, that video is viral on YouTube, so. That shit is viral, man. I'm not going nowhere, brother.
Absolutely not. Come back to reality.
Not racism, man. See, see, this is what happens when y'all get uh, opinions mixed up with facts, you know what I'm saying? And entertain. And it's like, yo, come on, man. Knock it off. You know, you won't be the first. Thou, I get, I get thousands of people to, man, I got millions of views. This doesn't come at an easy cost. I always get the channel hit. I always get people reporting stuff, you know what I'm saying? But I know what the fuck I'm doing and it's my opinion, okay? That's it. My opinion stands, okay? Now that video I just played a little while ago, that video's been played thousands of times, Ryan, okay?
You guys need to embrace God.
It's not, let's not get it twisted. Let's not get it twisted, okay? Because you dealing with some mental illness in your, behind your computer and stuff like that? Don't get mad at me. You can't touch me, beat me or anything. And you can't do nothing to this man that's giving his opinion evil. They triggered.
You know, all this kind of talk dude, from, from the name of the flag dude is against God. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, why do you wear a word I want? You see my big old bitch here, this day. Okay, yeah, I wanna see that.
Seven to eight percent of our school district revenue is at risk right now because we are currently not in compliance. That's what I just heard from the lawyer here who didn't know what gender identity was. Um, and from the gentleman over in this direction, I forget which one said about seven to eight percent. Um, those facts put together. The, I also am hearing a lot um, from folks that it has never happened before.
Alright, Trump train. If you're on a Trump train type one, and I hear what the fuck they talking about, but look at what Trump is saying. Trump is going on, Trump is not playing, okay? Let's not get past this. Let's not get past ourselves. Let's not forget that my boy White Chocolate says there are only two genders and he will end transgender lunacy. Uh-oh. Double tap screen. Let's get them likes up.
And staying in the United States, incoming President Donald Trump says he will end transgender lunacy once he takes office in January. Now, speaking in Phoenix, Arizona on Sunday, Trump vowed to create, create policies to only.
And look, let me just tell you dudes that be coming over here trying to push us around with your agendas, right? Listen, Trump is in office now. A lot of this social media shit and rights that y'all think y'all got, y'all about to get that shit snatched because y'all, y'all are really becoming terrorists, some of y'all. You know what I mean? For real. Y'all targeting people's businesses and stuff like that when you don't hear what you like to hear or wanna hear. And we simply saying, yo, keep that shit adult. We telling even the heterosexual people, keep it with adults. That's what we saying. It's just unfortunate that it's the transgenders that wanna push that agenda.
He recognized two genders, male and female. And in an apparent reference to gender-affirming surgery, Donald Trump said that he will end the mutilation of children with a stroke of his pen.
With a stroke of my pen, on day one, we're going to stop the transgender lunacy.
Oh man. Can y'all get the likes up? Double tap the screen or go to that top right three dots and hit that button, the like and everything's in there. But the question of the day is should boys being girls back? We already know the answer to this. And the people that, that, that really, you know, those couple of people that, that try to troll that poll? It really shows where your brains at, cause that's not even something to play with.
And I will sign executive orders to end child sexual mutilation. Get transgender out of the military and out of our.
Now go flag Trump, cause it's coming out of his mouth. Y'all don't wanna hear that shit.
And I will sign executive orders to end child sexual mutilation. Get transgender out of the military and out of our element.
Trump train. That's just how it's gonna be.
Three schools and middle schools and high school.
And after a while, you know, we'll go back to the old America where we know, say whatever the fuck we want. And if you don't like it, fuck you. Alright? I go, thank you for pulling up to the conversation last night, even though you were snoring and fell asleep.
And we will keep men out of women's sports. And that will likewise be done on day one. Should I do day one, day two or day three? How about day one?
Now this.
How they gonna get him out of here? You know what I'm saying? You know, so Trump want me to go back to being a boy, not happening. They gonna get him out of here. How they try to shoot him? You can't kill Trump, man. I don't know, I don't know what the fuck is wrong with y'all. But I've been, I'm from New York. I've been around forever. Only thing I remember is these rappers trying to emulate that white man. Fuck y'all talking about? Trump is synonymous with, when you playing spades, right? What do you say? I'm Trump type, right? When you got all winners, it's what? You're Trump type. Can't kill Trump. Fuck is wrong with y'all? He's been ordained by God already. If God wanted somebody else, God would have put him there.
Nigga, you gay.
Alright? Don't go too far in the rabbit hole. God has approved of Trump. And all y'all people that were doing those blogs, that was predicting to, yeah, they all these psychics and mediums saying that he will not win. He will die and all this other shit, man, shut up, man. Whatever y'all wished on him, it didn't happen. God got a better plan. Alright, if y'all like hearing it, that's your business. You know what I'm saying? What are you gonna do? Get active. Go use your voice for something else besides hating on people, alright? Calling it love. I, don't do I hate that? Don't say I hate when somebody talk about how much they love you and they show you nothing but hate. It feels like, almost like when you're doing everything right in a relationship and the person comes to you and say you're cheating. You know when you start thinking? That you cheating. You must be, cause I ain't doing nothing but busting my ass. Don't you feel like that? When somebody accuse, man? Hating on some, somebody when they clearly hating on regular ideology. Somebody even say American principles, you know what I'm saying? Like for real, for real. Oh, maybe I'm, maybe I've talked some old school shit, you know what I'm saying? But trust me when I tell you, if you let them get away with one thing, the next thing is gonna be regular. You understand me? That's why it's a good thing that black people are taking account of their actions.
Tell y'all niggas right. Watch what you say, cause some shit is getting back. And y'all niggas that's running y'all mouth, the Mac mean and all the rest of it.
You know what I'm saying? Double tap the screen. Let's get the likes up, okay? And if not. Okay, enough of that, alright? My man is not having it. Trisom.
And female. And in an apparent reference to gender-affirming surgery, Donald Trump said that he will end the mutilation of children with a stroke of his pen.
With a stroke of my pen, on day one, we're going to stop the transgender lunacy. And I will sign executive orders to end child sexual mutilation. Get transgender out of the military and out of our elementary schools and middle schools and high school.
I mean, the military itself wants them gone. I mean, you know, you can't be mad at that, man.
And we will keep men out of women's sports.
Y'all wanna um, join a panel, the link is pinned. Let me know if the pin, if the link works, y'all. Cause I don't know if that link works. I might have to put it up on the community wall, alright? So let me know. But does it work? One. If it doesn't, type two. But just hit the link, somebody, let me know. One in the wrenches.
And that will likewise be done on day one. Should I do day one, day two or day three? How about day one?
Now this is not the first time.
It's shaking like Vegas crap dice.
Time Trump has railed against transgender rights. In fact, he aggressively ran television ads during his campaign mocking Vice President Kamala Harris.
Dude gonna ask me, do you think Trump is serious about that? Know my response was, does a cat got climbing gear?
For her support of transgender rights. And in the run-up to the presidential election, Donald Trump pledged to impose restrictions on trans students in schools. His policies could affect the use of preferred pronouns, bathrooms and locker rooms by students. Moreover, the incoming president believes that any doctor or hospital providing gender-affirming care should be banned from practice. And when it comes to sports, Donald Trump embraces his anti.
And he about to dig in they pockets.
And's mantra of not allowing biological men in women's sports.
And we will of course keep men. And we will of course keep men out of women's sports, I promise.
Does that link work? Um, wrenches, if y'all, if that link works, type one in the chat. If it doesn't, type two. Just hit the link, somebody, and let me know if it's going through.
Last year, the radical left's gender insanity arrived right here in Salem. When a man was allowed to transfer onto the Roanoke College Women's Swim Team.
Yeah, we do got a lot of people here, 300 people, 95 likes. Double tap the screen and get the likes up, all right? Please, okay? Aaron said the, the link doesn't work. I'm gonna put the link on the community wall. If y'all want to join, go to the community wall right now.
And I just met them backstage, the great swimmers. I didn't notice a male on that particular team. I didn't notice a male on that team. Perhaps I don't understand what's happening, but I didn't see any males on that team, believe me. But the brave members of the swim team stood up to the transgender fanatics, something new in our country. And those strong, and I would say beautiful, but I'm not allowed to use that term anymore with women because if you say beautiful, it means the end of your career in politics.
Link is pinned on the community wall to join the stream.
You're not allowed to say a woman's beautiful, so-
I'm in peace or leaving pieces.
So I will not tell you how beautiful they are, but they are beautiful.
I don't, I don't want to cause no emotional damage with anybody tonight, so just be nice.
But those strong, beautiful, intelligent women, they won.
The incoming commander in chief also plans to discharge transgender members of the US military, deeming them medically unfit. He plans, his plans would like-
Oh, they about, this shit about get spooky out here, you know what I'm saying? Now, that same video that I was just reviewing, Officer Tatum, he went through the view, video. I, I didn't, um, get his take on it, but I seen him go off about it earlier, you know what I'm saying? So here we go. And get a chance to give it a real reaction, all right? Let's get the likes up, let's get the likes up. If you're on the Trump train, type ones in the chat or put carrots, because we definitely going down the rabbit hole today, okay? Just like that. Put a hundred ones in the chat. Let's see if we get a hundred ones on the chat and 200 likes. Double tap that screen and go to the top right and hit three dots. I constantly say it because they hide that from us, you know? And plus I'm, um, shadow banned. Nine out of 10 times, y'all got here through the shorts feed, you know what I'm saying? I specifically do the things to the video to make sure it get to new people that don't know me from a hole in the wall. So subscribe. We go live a lot around here. And subscribe to my other channel, Mac Mean TSTV, we monetized over there.
Why are you doing this and then expect everybody to acquiesce to your mental illness? Like, I, I, if you want to live your life and look like this and act like this, just do you. You want to be obese and be a transgender that don't care? You make no effort to be trans. Then you got a blue part of your hair just hanging to the side, like you trying to be a troll. Will go. Prison Fellowship has sent more than 7,500 prisoners to inf- for it. And this is why John Amancucu, who's the pastor that always go to the school board and just lash these people because they deserve it. This is what he's up against. I get it. You live in America, you can do whatever you want to do. But why are you doing this? Why, 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 why are you doing this and then expect everybody to acquiesce to your mental illness? Like, I, I, if you want to live your life and look like this and act like this, just do you. You want to be obese and be a-
Word, why, why everybody gotta do it with you?
Transgender that don't care, you make no effort to be trans. Then you got a blue part of your hair just hanging to the side, like you trying to be a troll. Troll if you want, but why do people have to respect you doing it? You ain't even trying, bro. Wait till you see this fool say his pronouns are he, uh, she, her. Bro, you not even changing your voice. You don't even got a bra on. What are you doing? All right, wrote a clip.
Good to think about it. Why is-
Salvador, that's my boy, yo, hit this link, Salvador. Try to hit this link right here and pull up. You get a chance, because I want to ask you something, you know, quick question that I want the audience to hear.
This is such a roadblock. Why is it, why have we spent an hour discussing this? Especially, you, you say you care about students, but half of you are not sure what gender is. Especially transgender. No, the lawyer said transsexual earlier, that's not the correct term. It's transgender. I'm a transgender woman, my pronouns are she, her. And I will only accept those pronouns. I will not be addressed any other way. And in the workspace, I have, I'm protected by that. Our students should be too. Especially when they don't, they're not over 18, don't have a voice.
You know what I mean? Am I bugging when you, you know, misty? I feel the same way, I miss the old America. Um, truthfully, he said black men are being attacked for masonry and that's what's going on. Officer Tatum, Matt Hoffa, and many more. Wow, that's a deep statement. You could hit the, um, pin, um, you know what I mean? You want to explain it to me, queen?
So I'm just imploring you to, to go beyond what, um-
I'd be next, right?
Just really consider, what is this fight really about? Why is it such entrenched? I know we hear a lot about religious liberty and, uh, quite honestly, uh, I grew up in Christian education all through college. I don't remember any of my doctrinal classes mentioning only male and female. And that's the way it should be. Um, if, if you feel it is, awesome. Good, you get to believe that. You don't get to impose those beliefs on anybody else. And that's actually what, what religious liberty is, is that your right to believe that's protected, but the other person that identifies as something else.
Ooh.
Is also, also is, is right to be protected.
This, uh, I want to call him a blob.
Turn it off.
But I'm not gonna call him a-
They talk about me, I be, I be nice when I speak.
Uh, this person said he went through Christian education. And this is the problem, and I said this in the last video, and some of y'all probably mad at me. I said this in the last video.
We got 450 people here, double tap the screen. If you got here from the shorts feed or vertical feed, welcome, all right? If you're on the Trump train, let's get ones in the chat so we can identify who the enemies is and who are the friendlies.
If you go, now he could have lied, he could have lied. But if you go through a Christian education system and you-
My bad. Let me reload this. All right, we back up. My bad. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, if you got here through the shorts feed, um, double tap the screen and go to the top right, hit the three dots. Get your, get your, uh, vote on in the poll too.
You don't hear that there's-
Especially if you got kids.
Only two genders. They failed you. You should get your money back. And I, and, and I'm, I'm inclined to believe that he didn't lie because Christianity is so watered down today, it's insane to me. Christian pastors are afraid to say it's two genders. It's only like five of them that I know online right now that are just stand up and say, i- it ain't number two genders, y'all need to stop all this trans stuff, it's not right. God, God does not agree with this stuff. It's only a handful of pastors that are willing to say that. And many of you'll go to their church and they will acquiesce to something like this. And then the-
Um, truthfully, he said that he's a, he's a narcissist. You know what it is with me, man? I, you know, I, I'm gonna keep it real. Once I start getting into department of character, I, you know, I, I don't have too much hope in people at all, you know what I'm saying? I feel like most people are narcissists, right? Including myself probably. Um, and that's just how it is. That's just how it is. And, um, but I like to get into what the person is saying and I like to fact find. I like to find out what's the truth and what's not. And, um, I like the person to trigger me to want to go and study and learn more. So my opinion about the person is a little bit, I'm more concerned with what I'm hearing and how to find out the truth as opposed to the person. Because if I leave it up to me and my judgments, man, it's fuck everybody, man. Anybody's a weirdo.
Person goes and says religious freedom. Listen, there's a difference-
Especially the filthy rich ones.
Between something being an opinion and something being a truth. That biologically, scientifically, there's only two genders, two sexes. Really, we shouldn't even consider gender because gender is, is a language thing. Gender nouns and stuff.
Not in the channel, hit the button at the top, it's free, you know what I'm saying? Should boys be allowed and girls back? I think that that is a self-explanatory, um, um, thing. I think that whether you have kids or not, you should understand, like, man, man, anybody with sexual desires, you know, this shit start kicking in when you're young. And they could get, you know, kick-started a little bit earlier if you start having the wrong interactions in school. Come on, let's keep it real.
Stuff like that, that, or gendered language. If you go into Greek or you go into Hebrew, there are certain things that are masculine and feminine. That's gender based on the English language or language in, in general. So it's really sex. There's only two sexes, XXXY chromosome. If you go back and look at histor- i- in history and you going to try to find out what do these bones belong to, a male or a female? Who was the head of the tribe? You do a DNA sample and you're gonna get XX or XY chromosomes, that's it. If you get-
So they saying there's a new chromosome, an alien chromosome, but that's rabbit hole shit, so we aren't talking about-
A mysterious XXX or Y Y Y or something like that, something didn't happen. Is, it is an anomaly that you would never see in millions of people. I mean, you know, one in millions of people. So scientifically, we should acknowledge that there's only two. Now, we can have the grace that people may want to identify as something else. And that's cool. If you want to identify as that, you can. It is your life. You can do whatever you want to do. However, other people shouldn't be- Subject to your delusion. I don't know how we still talk about it at this point, but Christians need to stand up and be a lot, a lot more bold instead of being cowards. The only reason we have this stuff in this country because Christians are cowards. They get in polit- political positions of power and they, they ain't talk about, they don't talk about Jesus Christ one time. Anyway, I can go on forever about that.
What do y'all believe? You know, people with parents, I mean, with kids, people that's parents, you know, you got kids and stuff like that. All right, let's take it to, let's, let's go down the rabbit hole a little bit, right? Because I want to get off that subject. I think that, um, I'm gonna drop another question in the poll. What? They're saying that, um, this thing with Elon Musk and, and, uh, Vivek Ramaswamy, it's almost like they, they, they putting headlines up saying that they, they're splitting up MAGA somehow and people are, I, I don't know what's going on, so this is a real reaction, I'm gonna let it play through.
... immigration crackdown when he takes office 25 days from now. We're seeing a crack between some of his top advisors and his MAGA base. Elon Musk and Vivek Ramaswamy are both facing major blowback from their own supporters for not only backing, but encouraging offering more visas to highly skilled foreign workers. Over the Christmas holiday, Musk posted this online saying, think of this like a pro sports team. If you want your team to win the championship, you need to recruit top talent wherever they may be. He later added, I'm referring to bringing in via legal immigration, the top 0.1% of engineering talent as being essential for America to keep winning. He's talking about H1B visas, which allow employers to hire highly skilled foreign workers. Musk, who himself is from South Africa, said that he once had this kind of visa. And he's arguing that Silicon Valley is facing a shortage of excellent engineering talent, as he put it. But the annual cap on those kinds of visas right now is at 65,000, then another 20,000 for those who get a master's or a doctorate in the US. Musk is being backed up by his partner and Trump's government efficiency initiative, Vivek Ramaswamy. He says it's a cultural issue that there aren't more competitive engineers in the US. Here's what he said online. A culture that celebrates the prom queen over the math Olympiad champ or the jock over the valedictorian will not produce the best engineers. A culture that venerates Cory from Boy Meets World or Zack and Slater over Screech and Saved by the Bell or Stefan over Steve Urkel and Family Matters will not produce the best engineers. But that argument is not going over well with Trump's MAGA base, certainly not online. Some of them saying, we did not ask them to engineer an immigration policy. Tech wants indentured servants, not high-skilled workers. You don't even know what MAGA immigration policy is. Now, Trump himself, who I should note restricted H1B visas in his first term, has sat on the campaign trail this time around that he did want to make it easier for educated foreigners to work in the US.
What I want to do and what I will do is you graduate from a college, I think you should get automatically as part of your diploma, a green card to be able to stay in this country. And that includes junior colleges too. Anybody graduates from a college, you go in there for two years or four years, if you graduate or you get a doctorate degree from a college, you should be able to stay in this country.
My political sources tonight are former New York-
Double tap the screen, you gotta remember Vivek and, and Elon Musk is very big businessman, super rich.
City Mayor Bill de Blasio, CNN political commentator and Republican strategist, Shermychal Singleton, and also CNN economics and political commentator Catherine Rampell. And Catherine, you have, have covered this issue for a, a long time. Can you just lay out what we're looking at here in this divide between what Elon Musk says he thinks would be the best for the United States? And, and why we are seeing something that we, we have not seen frankly, almost at all lately, which is a lot of people in the MAGA universe outright disagreeing with him, arguing with him, and breaking with him online.
So you guys, I think are exactly right. America's ability to attract talent from around the world is basically our economic superpower. Uh, the fact that-
I mean, they want to import them scientists that, you know, that's, and pay them $5 an hour, you know what I mean? Like, like, let's keep it real, man. They want to exploit you, they want to exploit them in the right way for the pockets, all right? Wait. Give me one second. All right, there we go.
In particular, we've been able to attract high-skilled immigrants quite reliably in this country over the past century or so, is why we have this enduring leadership in science, tech, and business. So just as an example, uh, of all Fortune 500 companies, about half of them were founded by immigrants or the children of immigrants. And of the, uh, Nobel laureates, American Nobel laureates who have received, um, uh, prizes for the hard sciences this century, about 40% of them are immigrants who came to this country. So again, this is our superpower and I'm very glad that Musk and Vivek Ramaswamy recognize it. Uh, I very much hope that they are able to influence Donald Trump, uh, on this particular issue, but I'm doubtful about it because just as you mentioned, in his first term, Trump was actually quite hostile to legal immigrants, in particular, by the way, high-skilled legal immigrants. He made it really hard for them to come here.
Man, shut up.
Uh, not just those who wanted work authorization, international students, uh, who cross-subsidize American students, by the way. Um, you know, he, he basically harassed them and-
She need to get some, she need to get something going. She need to get something going, man. All right, anyway, let's get to Tom Homer, man, because honestly, man, let's, 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 let's keep it real, right? We could listen to these people complain all day, man, you know? But I'm kind of interested in the fact that they still just keep on targeting like, um, Trump's whole little squad that he put together, everybody he put together. He told the trend of Aragua. Trend de Arripa. My gang is bigger than your gang. Ooh. Some American shit.
I care because I stood on the back of a tractor trailer in 19 dead aliens that suffocated and baked to death.
Exactly, Salvador, CNN.
That's including a five-year-old little boy that died in his father's arms. Throughout my career, I've seen tragedies, hell-held dying children. I've seen dead aliens on the trail. I've talked to little girls as young as nine years old that-
Doesn't know how to pronounce words that good, but the ones that do get through, man, it's some sharp shit.
Were raped multiple times by criminal cartels. They're animals. When you look into a little girl's eyes, nine years old, who had adults take everything innocent and pure from her, you look in those eyes, those eyes have no life in them, her life will never be the same. That's what pisses me off because President Trump has us locked down. He had it locked down. And this administration came in and unlocked it. People die on the border every day. Women are sex trafficking in this country every day. That's why I'm pissed off. And that's why the best day of my life was President Trump getting reelected to save lives. A secure border saves lives. It isn't rocket science. They get fired up over again. You Trump, Trump, Trump. That's right. President Trump's gonna make this country safe again. President Trump's gonna make our border great again. President Trump's gonna decrease illegal migrant crime at unprecedented rates because out of the gate, day one, we're gonna focus on public safety threats and national security threats. They're first, they're coming first. And Trenda Agua, your day- And Trinda Agua, your day.
Said my gang is bigger than yours. All right, another motherfucker. My boy Senator Kennedy, man. Yo, listen, I'm gonna tell you something, man. I think I'm gonna do a whole week, you know what I mean? After the ball drop, or just Senator Kennedy. My boy don't get no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Wise, you're not being honest with us, are you?
Called a liar to her face. You see that silence? My boy, and he always got receipts for everything he said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Wise.
Now, this is a congressional hearing.
You're not being honest with us, are you?
That is incorrect.
Well, we all may be poorer under President Biden, but we're not stupid. We have a long list of your articles and your opinions and your political statements. On March 8, 2017.
I told you, he coming with the receipts all the time.
You wrote an article for Time Magazine. While you were a sitting judge. It's entitled Judge Gender Laws Are At Odds With Science. Come on, quote your words. "When legislators blur the lines of church and state and enact laws that permit or prohibit conduct based on biological gender as only male or female, they place an impossible burden on the judiciary." End quote. Did I read that accurately?
I do not know because I don't have the article in front of me.
I do. You also said in that article, quote, your words, not mine, "Sex has countless, countless natural permutations," end quote. Did I read that correctly?
Who's coming in the driveway?
My bad, y'all.
Believe that is consistent with medical science and under the Dalbert standard, the science that comes in as expert testimony and trials.
On October 13, 2020, while you were serving as a state judge, you wrote an article for The Atlantic entitled, quote, your words, not mine, "America's judiciary doesn't look like America." And you criticized this committee and President Trump for his judicial nominees. You said, quote, these are your words, not mine. "The judiciary crafted over the past four years does not look like America. Not one of these judges is black and more than 90% were raised or currently identify as Christians." I don't know how you knew that. And then you say, quote, your words, not mine, "Identity is the lens that filters everything and everyone we encounter." End quote. Did I read that correctly?
Again, I don't know because I don't have the article in front of me.
I do, I got it right here. You wrote another article on July 31, 2020, for the San Francisco Daily Journal.
Uh-oh.
In which you advocate for the right of sitting judges to be able to go to protests, didn't you?
That is incorrect.
No, it's not. I'm looking at right here. This is what you say.
This is a judge, mind you. Boy, oh, boy, happy holidays.
No judge should be ethically, your words, not mine. You just said you didn't say them. You turned these articles over. "No judge should be ethically constrained from speaking or taking action that reinforces that constitutional and moral imperative. May judges participate in demonstrations that denounce racism."
This is how judges talk to people. You know what I'm saying? But this is how senators talk to judges.
Support equal justice and reinforce our constitutional rights.
Urupt judges that lie.
Price to free speech and peaceful assembly? Yes. End quote. Did I read that correctly?
I don't know because I don't have the article in front of me.
If you're a federal judge, are you gonna go to protests?
I would like to answer the substance of the underlying question that.
Oh, she's shook.
Was asked.
She is scared to death.
I'd like you to answer my question. I've only got another minute or so. If you're.
I love the fact that they do this on camera all the time.
Federal, have you, let me put it another way.
M W salute, brother.
Have you ever gone to a protest, a public protest?
Happy holidays, man.
Protest while you're a sitting judge?
Senator Kennedy, the article that you are referring to was.
Have you ever gone?
No. He cold, man. Him and Ted Cruz.
Have you ever gone to a protest, a public protest, while you're a sitting judge?
Senator Kennedy.
Of course she did. That's why she let her whole staff go, of course. It was a day out.
The article that you are referring to was written.
Have you ever gone to a protest while you're a sitting judge?
I do not believe that I have ever attended a protest as a sitting judge or perhaps ever in my life.
Long hauls. The link is on a community wall. Y'all want to join the discussion and hit the panel? You know, you don't got to show your face. But yeah, he's saying, who are you working for?
And you talk about.
I, us, or them? Us or them? Yeah, that's a fact, Jonathan. But more or less, like I said, it's done in the public space. What he's doing is creating a further record of her fuck shit. So when January 20th come, we know who's leaving. Or I mean, if it's not their time to leave yet, we know who's gonna have a hard time after January 20th.
About Girls Inc., you say you've never heard of them. You're on the, or you don't know that much about them. You were on the board from 2014 to 2024. You're still on their board, aren't you?
I'm not, my term expired this last month.
And you've given them over $50,000, haven't you?
I do not believe that is correct.
That's what your report says. And this is, this is the.
She just keep lying like she don't know what's going on.
This is the same girl.
They know witch hunt. They be leaving this type of trip. See, you know what it is? They be doing all this stuff until they get held accountable by the right one. This Kennedy dude, Ted Cruz, yo, these some bad people, man. Tulsi Gabbard, these some bad.
Inc. that says, quote, on its website, here's how they define girls. Quote, "Girls refers to gender expansive youth, cis girls, trans girls, non-binary youth, gender non."
There we go with that subject again.
Conforming youth, gender queer youth, and any self, any girl identified youth. Did I read that correctly?
Uh-oh.
I don't know. I've never heard of that policy or that definition from Girls Inc.
Listen, in spite of your, I mean, can I just have 30 more seconds? In spite of your strongly held political beliefs? And we've got all of them, all your articles. They're as long as King Kong's are. Are you telling us today, do you believe that you will not allow?
I don't know why he remind me of Columbo. He got that disheveled look, you know what I'm saying? Stupid smart, puts you in a position to make you lie, knowing that he already got the truth. Oh, yeah, he, this one, he's a horrible.
Your strongly held political beliefs stand for your judicial opinions. Is that, do you believe that?
The best evidence of the type of federal judge I will be.
Yes, ma'am. Do you believe that? Do you believe that?
It's the type of judge I have been for 10 years, who is one who always puts the law above my personal.
Do you also believe in Bigfoot?
Oh, he are.
Do you believe in the tooth fairy?
Your time has expired, Senator.
Do you believe Jimmy Hoffa died of natural causes?
Senator Hirono, well, that's very nice of you, Senator Holi.
Thank you, Senator Kennedy.
Oh, it gets worse, it gets worse. Let me show, look, matter of fact, let's get off of this video for a second. Just so I can tell you that my boy been playing hardball for a long time. And yo, he don't take no prisoners. Because I think that, just like with Trump, man, I think that a lot of people that start rocking with Trump kind of got attracted to the idea that here's somebody that's that's supposed to be a politician, but he don't actually talk like one. So I think he related to the human side of people and that's what got him in the position that he was in. That's it. You know, that's simple strategy. To talk like a regular person, this is what you get, what you get.
You didn't tell Kennedy out here. Gram the truth, did you?
Senator, I took an oath to tell the truth and I have done so faithfully.
Now, on February 22.
The Pentagon foiled another audit, failed another audit. Who's going to jail? No one. Well, yeah, nobody ain't going to jail. I mean, Hunter didn't go to jail when he dropped that crack in the White House.
2018. You spoke to the American.
Know who Hunter bought that crack off of? I wonder who he bought it off of? That person, oh, man. He's probably dead. Whoever sold him that shit is probably dead. The more powerful these people get, oh, we gotta get, listen, that's a loose end.
American Constitution society. And this is what you said. The right.
I like looking at no mainstream news truth lady. I like looking at like Guy, I like looking at Guy and different stuff, you know what I'm saying? And I like looking at documentaries of people that's well studied and already studied that leave references to what they talking about.
Work movement is deeply racist. You said that, didn't you?
Senator, I do not have that speech in front of me. I have spoken on a number of occasions about the history.
Turned your notes over to us. You didn't read them before you turned them over?
You know what it is? I like, like an older dude, like an older dude that looks like he don't got nothing, that he doesn't want nothing from you. I mean, with Islam, in Islam, there was some, somebody wrote, spoke to me about a parable about somebody that, that the person that gives you everything but asks you for nothing, that's the person that you would want to follow. And that was the Prophet Muhammad. That was the first, the first person I've ever read about that was like that. And that's what made me become Muslim, man. Because they didn't require me to give up nothing. So what this guy right here, doesn't look like he seeks to gain anything, man. He just speaks from a real place.
Senator, I've spoken on a number of occasions about the history. I was not speaking about.
Are you saying that you didn't say that?
Senator, I've spoken on a number of occasions about the history.
Ma'am, are you saying that you didn't say that?
If, I have turned over all of my notes for my speeches.
I don't think you telling the truth, Ms. Burner.
She like a porn star from the 70s.
Let me, let me ask you another question. Do you remember Mary, or rather Mindy Sturgie?
No, sir, I do not remember.
I'm embarrassed you don't remember her. She was one of the union members. She alleged that she was the victim of sexual discrimination at one of her, one of your local unions. This is what she said. She alleged that one of the executives there asked her, quote, "If she enjoyed rough sex and bondage." She said that the chapter president, Mr. Dave Regan, asked her, quote, "Does the carpet match the drapes?" And, quote, "What would you do for some jewelry?" She alleged that Mr. Regan told another staffer, quote, "That the only way she is getting a job is if she sucked."
Oh, my God, this is a family show. Come on, man, this is too real for TV. You know what? I ain't gonna lie to y'all, right? I would dance about it. Double tap the screen, get the likes up. Here we have a fierce battle between a Komodo and a goat. Those things right there, those Komodo dragons are so nasty, man. Hey, you know, when they bite you and they track you down for weeks if they have to? And they fast. Oh, yeah. It might eat that goat whole. Look, he breaking through the gate, through the makeshift gate. They threw a goat at this dude. And goats, I ain't gonna lie, they some amazing creatures. They could walk up a wall like Spider-Man. Yo, he is about to knock this goat down. The goat is female, it says about a title here. You know what I'm saying? Female goat. Motherfuckers got a body here, they like, oh, man, oh, my God. And look at the goat trying to ram him. Damn Bambi, his cousin. He's ramming him, he's trying to fight back. That's a, that goat got the, that goat got bigger balls than Bullis Gotti, man. Look at this. He tried to fight back. Come on, Raheem. You know, I call that, that goat Raheem. Look at him, he trying to fight back. Oh, man, I can't watch the end of this. He started out good. Let me see, look. He challenged him and then he, ah, man. See, the bad part about these things is that once they bite you, it's a wrap. Anyway, man, I don't want to mess my weekend up. It's Friday, man. Double tap screens, get the likes up, man. When the evil principal doesn't realize that he is being recorded, he's being filmed. See, speaking about school, I think this is, you know, this is cosmic, man. This drops right into my lap, you know? Let's see what's going on here. Let's take a peek up there.
I don't know if she's not, but there's a security camera in that room. Yeah, and it caught everything on camera. Play? Oh, no, ma'am, he's going to jail somewhere.
Police are called to a small private school in Ocala, Florida after the principal is accused of trapping a fifth grade student in a room and assaulting him for nearly an hour. The following report is based on police records and most of the footage has never been seen before until now. Please note that the suspect in question and all persons charged with the crime are presumed innocent unless and until proven guilty in a court of law.
How you doing, sir? God bless you.
How you doing? Do you know I'm here?
Yes, we had called because we just got a report that one of, that our principal, Ms. Hallow, on our keys today.
Your principal did?
Yes.
Do you have a video of it?
Yes, yes, and we have a video of it. That's the executive principal right there. We have a video of it. That the person who can pull it up is on their way in maybe about 30 minutes before they can get here.
I never thought of myself as a caregiver. This is my daughter. And I told her, as long as you want to fight this, I will fight this with you. If you're in the Carefoot program, consider yourself very lucky. I had.
You know, I said earlier that it's Friday, right?
Are you the one that called 911?
She called 911. She's our pastor. I'm a founder, she's the founder of the school.
Destiny Leadership Academy is a Christian school started by Lily Tuggerson, known as Apostle T. to her.
Man, Christian school.
Congregants at a mosque, the Pentecostal church nearby. It's clear immediately that the line between school employees and church followers is somewhat blurry.
Or apparent, yeah.
It'll be some time before the school secretary arrives with the surveillance video. But Dr. Vai, Destiny's executive principal, has already seen the footage and even her description of it sounds appalling.
In that video, what did you see?
I saw the principal in severe physical confrontation with the student.
And what physical did you see?
I saw, I saw him throw the kid on the floor at one point.
What do you mean by throw? Did he pick him up? Did he push him?
I saw a slinging.
He slinged him like that?
Yes, and then at one point, one point he was on top of the kid.
As horrifying as these details sound, the.
No, DT, I just don't plan on being on the video for two hours, you know? I'm just, you know, you want to see that video, you can go see it. It says, "Woke Biden nominee lies. Senator Kennedy exposes her." Go find it, all right? Don't get cute over here, neither, man. All right, just be cool while you cool. When you come up in here, you know what I'm saying? Just say what's up, all right?
People seems to wonder if something precipitated the confrontation.
Did the kid do anything to invoke this, to lead up to this? Did the kid strike him? Did he, was he, did they have problems in the past?
They've had problems in the past.
They've had problems in the past.
GT, I'm just fucking with you, man. You good.
Best friends.
So this is an ongoing issue?
I think so.
Okay.
And it's not-
But what led, that's what I'm trying to figure out. What, did he was just in, in anger rage? So he took it on the kid?
My understanding is that he called the kids in.
That's why you gotta teach your kids how to fight, man. I ain't gonna lie, man. Teach your kids how to fight. Tell them to hit back too. There's nothing wrong. Grown ass person starts manhandling you. Pick up whatever you can pick up, you know what I'm saying? And shove it in his gut. I know who's gonna get knocked out, but who y'all think is gonna get knocked out? Short or tall? If you think short is gonna get knocked out, put S. If you think tall is gonna get knocked out, type T. Never mind.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Hey, not on the chin, buddy. I'm gonna take him on the chin like that.
He was too cool to be boxing in the first place. See his face? We about to start counting sheep. Y'all wait for it. Damn, he punched him like he owed him an eighth. Crack. Damn, look how he hit that ground. Shit, he trying to send a text message to somebody. Oh. Aw, man. That jab will knock him out. Aw, man, somebody's gonna get knocked out here.
Mouthpiece. Yeah, baby. Street beef, round one, let's work.
Get the type of referee to get knocked out by mistake, right? Alright, who's gonna win? Karate Kid or Bald? Alright, my money's on Karate Kid. You know what I'm saying? Karate Kid or Baldi? Come on. K or B? Did he just say wah? I know he didn't just say that. Cause then I'll change my mind if he said that. Nah, Bald has gonna, Bald has gonna win. Oh, man, send them up to Karate Jesus. Aaron, you see that shit? Wow.
Right name, Iron Dragon, 138. My first fight. Let's get it.
I had the vaping shit, you know what I'm saying? Now, who you gonna, who you think was gonna win? Bone Dog, you know what I'm saying? Or, or Trey D?
138. My first fight.
It's Bone Dog, you know what I'm saying? I ain't gonna lie, man. Long spot, they put some Kool-Aid on that boy.
Let's get it.
He definitely gonna get knocked out.
Five, five.
What, your hand raised or not?
Pittsburgh, sure. I'm gonna have.
He look like he'll rob somebody though. Alright, come on. I never been that physical. That's why I went to jail. Cause all this fighting and shit made me, you know what I mean? It made my trigger finger itch. You know what I mean? But I respect this type of shit. This is American. This is American shit. Double tap the screen, get the likes up, alright? This is American shit. Fighting until you knock somebody's teeth out. Yeah, right. Somebody be like, man, come on, man. Just a fight. Not at my age, I got no teeth, you know what I'm saying? To spare. Got no bones to spare. When I was young, I'd have broke all my bones. I ain't give a fuck about no bones. I ain't cared nothing about no bones. You catch me flying down Dead Man's Hill, you know what I mean? Like this, doing the Jesus, standing on, on a bicycle fucking seat. Ain't give a fuck about no bones. Today, hell, you know, I'm not, this, I don't got nothing to prove. I'm cheering. Exactly. The problem is that we got guns, you know what I'm saying? In America. That's why you can't be out here fighting with people. You have nothing to do. Oh, let's punch somebody in the face for money? You know what I'm saying? I see why Mike Tyson best might hit. I'm trolling, man. Trolling will get you swollen, but not me. You know what I'm saying? Double tap screens, get the likes up. Who's gonna win? Tall or short? T or S? No ditty. Correct, light-skinned dude gonna get up and kick his ear off his face. Look at his face. He's concerned. He's thinking, yo, I thought this was a light-skinned young dude, you know what I'm saying? I was gonna handle him. And right now, he's choking me out. With Versace shorts on. What? Alright, let's fast forward, man. This is too much lovemaking, man. I need y'all to get up and fight, man. Is it over? Would he hit him with a chair? The fuck just happened? Oh, okay. This corner, man. Alright. Aw, man, you know what? I'll fire my coach, you know? Now, we need- You know, a real friend would have told him, yo, bro, this dude about to knock you fuck out. That's you, you know what I mean? We trying to jump this fool. Okay, let's go back. I think I went to a whole nother fight. Yeah, we seen these dudes before. Hold on for a second, man. Let me go back to the fight. Okay. Alright, here we go. Good night, I- I wouldn't even want to do play like this no more after I'm done. You know what I'm saying? I, I, man, I'll give up.
91st Airborne. It's for you.
Street beefs, it's showtime. You ready? You ready? Round one, fight!
My money's on the old Chinese man. You got too much to lose. Whoa, oh, oh, Blackie Chan, Blackie Chan, Bruce Lee Boy. The question is, who Blackie Chan and who's Bruce Lee Boy? You know what I'm saying? Sound like you bo- oh, oh, oh. Get him fried rice, too. He gonna fuck you up, Wild Club. Oh. I clap people, it's on them. See, OG got a strategy, you know what I'm saying? He working his, he working his shins out. Kinda man, like he got a strong jaw. Look. Things hit hard. Some slow heart punches. You know what they fight about, right? Wild Club used to come to his restaurant and slam on the window, you know what I'm saying? And be like, where's my shit? Mr. Chow, my name is Mr. Ching. Mr. Chow, Mr. Ching. Like, we gonna sell this in the park, bro. You gotta respect, you gotta respect the OG after this, man. He getting in the ring with a dude half his age. Come on, man.
You ready? Fight!
And knock him out. Now, Mr. Chow, you better not get knocked out, Mr. Ching. Oh, wow, he ate that. Mr. Chow ate that. Aw, I'd have been concerned. He looked like he gave him his hardest punch. Right there, man, and Mr. Chow ate that shit like dog. He punching Mr. Chow all in the- Wow. This that one right there. Oh, no, we gotta get that one in slow-mo. Hold on for a second, man. That was, that was flush. That was flush. You know what I'm saying? You gonna pursue him, make sure he's on the floor counting sheep and not you. Watch this. Look at Mr. Chow. Oh, he took that. Boom. Got him the first time. Now, look at this one. Right here. Haymaker. Bow! Talk to, oh, man. Anytime through the Harlem Shake Down there. You got, nah, nah. Alright, you know what I'm saying? He might win. Nacho, oh, man. Arab Nacho Libre.
Uh, shout out to Tusha too. Tusha, what's up?
I'm Anon, from Mississippi. Representing Orlando, Florida. I'm ready.
Street beef.
He did, he do- He do give me them vibes like he for the Alligator or two. He might win. I don't know. Let me see. This is the main event. Let me see.
And in this corner, we got Iraqi assassin. He's 28 and 3, and safe in the backyard.
Black or white? This is really simple.
Be safe, fellas. Fight hard.
DT, salute to you, brother. Approach it. We got sixteen more minutes. You ready? You ready? Let's fight!
Hands up, hands up, hands up. Yep. Nice.
Put your foot on that air.
There you go. Good, good. Nice, good, good, Barry.
Let's keep it real. Just by default, you saying in your mind that the black dude gotta win, right?
Double leg, double leg. Yep, nice. Fight for underhooks. There you go.
Get off the cage. There you go.
Fight underhooks, Omar. Yep.
He definitely fighting over weed though. We know that, right?
Start to turn, start to turn, start to turn. Yeah, there you go. Relax. Go to position. Nice. Hand him up. Yep. Get happy and relax. Yeah, start fighting. Start fighting inside. Hands up, hands up, hands up. Hands up, Omar. Don't chop in that league. Nice.
Black or white, y'all? You about to pick him up?
Got his stomach. Body shot. You have his stomach. Body shot. Body shot. There you go. Body shot. Body shot. Got his stomach. Don't let him take you down.
Come on, y'all.
It's on the left.
Hands fly. You know what you doing? Hands fly.
Slow this ass right down. Yeah, they fighting over weed. Ready? Good fight! Damn, he get him back, man. Jesus. You know what I'm saying? Salute to everybody, man. You know, I'm, I'm, I planned on trying to do two hours, you know what I'm saying? I pushed it this far, alright? Um, God's work, not the hard work. You feel me? Salute to everybody that came here that's new, alright? Brother said UFC's overrated, right? You know? Alright, so, yeah, I gotta get ready, get up out of here, man. Salute to anybody that came. I'll see y'all guys soon. Out. But before I go, you know what I'm saying? Let me see something real quick.
Hey, let me just add one more thing, Josh. Robert Brooks. Yo, look that up, please. Look up that, please. Robert Brooks.
What's up?
Did you hear? It just came out. It just got released, the video. Robert Brooks. Look, post that right, look that up real quick. You're gonna love that.
What's that about?
Uh, man died on the police custody of state New York. Look that up. They released the footage. Seventeen officers going to jail for murder. First degree murder. Look that up. They just released the footage. They just released, look, look at that video, homie.
I mean, expect, okay, oh, you coming in hot, right? No free.
Okay, Robert Brooks sentenced to twelve years in prison. Halfway through his prison, half, halfway through his sentence, I guess he gets into an altercation- I guess he gets into an altercation with officers, and 14 officers beat him to death. They just released the attorney-
Death in USA. The mall closed this morning for what is being called a security concern. It's reopened since. Police haven't yet defined what that threat is. They tell us there has been an arrest, and the decision to close was out of an abundance of caution. There was a large police presence, as you can see at the mall, with state police even blocking driving entrances. Syracuse Police Chief Joe Cecil will be holding a press conference momentarily. We will get to that in a moment, but first, we're also following a developing story out of Oneida County. The State Attorney General's office just releasing shocking body cam footage showing a graphic portrayal of prison officers punching, kicking an inmate who later died. State Attorney General Letitia James releasing that disturbing body cam video showing the beating that preceded the death of 43-year-old Robert Brooks, an inmate at Marcy Prison in Oneida County. Brooks died earlier this month. News Channel 9's Ashley Capra now sharing that video with us.
Yeah, Christie, the state AG's office confirming Robert Brooks was transferred from Mohawk Correctional Facility to Marcy Correctional Facility on December 9th. Now, less than 24 hours later, he would be dead.
Yeah, Mohawk and Marcy's right next to each other.
I did watch the video, and it's graphic. It shows Brooks being kicked, punched, and at one point, partially stripped all while being handcuffed. Just before 9:30 on December 9th, body cam video shows Robert Brooks in handcuffs being led into the infirmary at Marcy Correctional Facility. Corrections officers are then seen carrying Brooks into the lobby. He is then taken to a medical exam room. There are multiple corrections officers surrounding Brooks. A few minutes into the video, we see the beating.
This dude is just writing. Hmm, why the Venezuela bringing this to us, man?
...begin. Video showing a guard begin punching Bro-
Aw, man. Bloodthirst. Fucking demons.
Brooks.
I don't want to see no more of that, man.
But all where he was pronounced dead, he had been serving a 12-year sentence for assaulting his girlfriend.
Man, I'm just looking at something that Truth Lady sent me by Charleston White. My little brother, Gemstone. This folks is crazy.
We deserve the oppression and enslavement that they had. We have forfeited our rights that them people left for us. They left for inheritance of freedom, progression, prosperity. We forfeited it. They not-
Man, that was deep. That one was deep.
You can't hate a n*** that a kill his brother. You can't hate a n*** that disrespect his mama but honor his hood. How can you not hate a n*** that loved the dead but disrespect everything living in his life? I hate these people, homie, because they evil. They don't love black people, not these black people. Black children will be casted out, they will be spit on, and they will deserve it. Our ancestors didn't deserve it. Our ancestors deserved the freedom that we have today. We deserve the oppression and enslavement that they had. We have forfeited our rights that them people left for us. They left for inheritance of freedom, progression, prosperity. We forfeited it. They not building, why wouldn't you go against these n****s? They, they not building nothing, they destroying every woman they lay with. Why you gonna be on their side? I don't love nothing about black culture. I'm 46 years old, I, I can't think of nothing in life that black people can be proud of in 46 years. We ain't done one goddamn thing that we can be proud of and say I'm black and I'm proud. I want thing? N*** for the moment I was high and I was Mexican on the inside. I ain't Mexican food, I, I ain't date black women for 15 years. I watched how Mexicans bury one another. The loyalty and respect that I got amongst Mexicans, homie, I used to be jealous of men my people can't. I'm a proud man, but when we go to hoopin' together, I'm shamed.